Good evening. It's 6:03 Tuesday, July 2nd. I'm calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag was off camera.
You guys, you don't have the right spot. We were able to watch the flag on the screen.
Note to staff.
All right. Well, we made it through the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Will you please do the roll call, Ms. Hunter?
Yes. I will make note. Vice Chair Carter is absent. Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper is absent. And Commissioner Smith?
Here.
All right. So we have a quorum. And next item is closed session reports, which we have none. And then moving on to item four is adoption of our agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Move to adopt.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes 3-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is the consent calendar, which includes approving the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of June 18th.
Madam Chair, to the extent that I would have to abstain since I wasn't here, then we only have two members, I'm not sure we can actually take up the minutes.
I think we can. But I do have the bylaws.
Maybe you can.
Did you happen to look at that, Ms. Hunter?
Actually, if you get two, yes, you get two, the majority of the quorum, I guess you probably could.
Majority of the quorum, I think so.
I would draw my com-
Is this satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. So unless someone, Mr. Smith, did you want to poll the minutes?
Beg your pardon?
Poll, did you want to poll the minutes from the last meeting?
No.
Okay. And anyone in the audience have a concern about our meeting minutes from last meeting? Okay. So, Mr. Smith, would you like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes.
And I'll second it. And any further discussion on the minutes?
No.
Okay. In favor of approving the minutes from the meeting? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was a little, a little different. Usually-
And one abstention.
Up here.
And then one abstention, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Friend. All right, great. So nothing was pulled. Next is number seven, items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. Would anyone in the audience like to come up to the podium and share information with Planning Commission at this time on non-agenda items? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to number eight, written communications on non-agenda items.
We have none.
We have none. Okay. Number nine is presentations in educational workshop sessions. Tonight, we don't have any of those, which brings us to item 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. Now, first up is 10.1, site plan review, 99-05-r, historic district review, consideration of a site plan review application within the multifamily residential historic district zone to modify an existing single-family residence. And I'm going to turn that over to you, Ms. Hunter, to give us the staff report. And at this time, I'll just note that we did receive tonight, once we arrived, a memo from Ms. Hunter, and I'm sure you've got that, you'll tell us a little bit about that in your staff report.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the subject request previously came before the Planning Commission for consideration last year on August 15th, 2023. As described in the notice, the project includes consideration of the following work: removal and replacement of rotted stairs and railings as needed with similar materials and styles on the west and south elevations of the single-family residence, and removal and replacement of the wood decking on the south elevation with composite trex decking. Staff included the staff report from August 15th as attachment two in your packet. During the August 15th meeting, the Planning Commission continued the item for a period not to exceed six months to provide the applicant time to provide rationale and evidence in support of a finding to support the use of trex decking rather than wood. Staff met with the applicants on April 30th, 2024 to discuss the remaining requirements for the project. Subsequently, on May 15th, 2024, the applicant submitted the requested additional information included as attachment one of your packet. Prior to tonight's meeting, staff distributed a memorandum available at the back counter. This memorandum provides draft conditions of approval from the previous staff report. That was attachment one for item 10.1 of that August 15th meeting. In the event, the Planning Commission moves forward with approval. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Do either of you have questions for Ms. Hunter regarding the staff report?
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kristen, for the report. I was pleased and a little bit curious to see included in the packet, and probably the applicant provided it, but I'm not sure, the Senate Bill number 927 on building codes for historical buildings. And I found this really interesting and new to me. The question I guess I have is, is this still in effect or has it been superseded by new law?
That is not something I can answer. I would have to look that up.
Okay. And was this provided by staff or by the applicant?
This is part of the applicant's packet.
Okay. Well, maybe it's a question I can ask the applicant. But I do appreciate it being included because I thought it was enlightening to some respect. Okay. I have no questions, other questions of staff on this.
If I may follow up. Regarding the idea of the building codes that was cited a moment ago, that came up before the city council and before us twice before when we had folks at another end of Cedar Ravine cite these rules and mention that a city council member had said that the guidelines approved were not intended to cover anything but Victorian houses. And that discussion was before us twice for that same applicant, and then again before the city council, when that matter was before the council. And at the conclusion, after it was all over, Pierre said the building codes that were previously cited and approved by that former city council was not relevant because it had been replaced by the Secretary of Interior's guidelines. In short, all the references to those historic building codes are not applicable. They are replaced, whether we like it or not, by the Secretary of Interior's standards. At least that's what Pierre Revaz said at the last meeting.
So through the chair, if I may, I think not necessarily specific to this application, but this is a question perhaps to bring back for internal staff discussion. I think what Commissioner Smith just offered, I think is very interesting. I'm not taking any disagreement with it for sure, but it seems that it almost raises additional questions that we should probably look at. And this is a really important issue to us as we know. So, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. This time, I'd like to ask the applicants to come up to the podium if you would like to emphasize anything in the materials that you submitted, or if there's anything new that you'd like to draw to our attention.
First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for an in-depth, very relatable explanation, especially with the Secretary of the Interior. We're looking for an exemption. You guys, this has been going on for a year. We got to get this done. You tell us what we need to do. You know, our intent was never, never to, you know, bypass protocol or anything like that. Our intent was, and our contractors, local fellows, will tell you that, or they won't tell you, but the deck was a mess. Somebody was going to get hurt.
Oh, yeah. The pictures tell the story for sure.
Yeah.
And that was in your original application, the condition of the deck.
And what I'm having a hard time with is that, you know, through the course of material improvements, we live, we found out, in the historical district. And apparently, we are, you know, we're regulated on what we can and cannot do. And there are things within that district that support composite materials on roofs, on railings, on streets, on everything. So we're asking you for, to look at that from the Secretary of Interior, that we are exempt. Because I'm-
And, you know, I appreciate that. I don't want you to get too upset with us here at the outset.
No, no, no.
Actually, I have a couple of questions, but it looks like, did you want to add something to that as well? It seems like you were kind of moving toward the microphone.
Oh, no, I was just kidding.
Okay, you're getting more comfortable.
She was, she thought she was a karaoke.
And we appreciate, really deeply appreciate you restoring this property and maintaining and taking care of it. And I had a question for you. I just want to make sure that I understand your intention with this house. It was mentioned in the staff report, and it's in last year's staff report. This is your single-family residence. You are not running it as a B&amp;B anymore. Do you intend to use it as a B&amp;B, or is this just-
We were young and we did it. We had fun and enjoyed it, met wonderful people, but-
So in the time that you've owned it, it was a B&amp;B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now we're both retired.
But now you just want to live there?
We just want to live there in peace.
And safety.
And safety.
Right. Okay. That's great. That's a very important point for us to consider when we look at the application of the SOI standards in this particular instance. Do either one of you have a question for the applicants?
Yeah, these are my concerns. As far as I understand, our practice has been that for the Interior Secretary's standards, our rule has been, can you see it from the street? And that's the standard that we would apply here, I would presume. We can't see it from the street. And from the photographs, it has wood grain to where it looks like the real thing.
Right.
It passes that like-for-like standard. The question I had was about those railings that you replaced. Did you get a building code or building permit to change the railings?
Here's the crutch of all this stuff. We thought it was our responsibility to maintain a structure that we lived in every single day, to maintain a safe environment in case guests came over, or we want to walk out our thing. This deck goes out our back, it's like our backyard there. It's our back deck. So, anyway, we thought it was our responsibility, and it was up to us to go ahead and make the improvements. And I'm telling you, this trex is an improvement over wood material. You know, you don't have splinters, you don't have rotting, you don't have people falling through it. You don't, and I'm getting older. I don't have to maintain it that much, you know? I squirt it off and it's beautiful.
And the railings that we did put in there, if you notice, it was the original, what is that called?
Victorian spindle.
Spindles, yes. And these guys, they were so gentle with those to make sure, because I love that little thing. And even the little thing up on the top, you know, when they painted, I was just so, don't you be touching that. You know, you're sure you get it back on-
So you restored that? You did not have to have that fabricated?
Right. You know, that was, it had the atmosphere of it being-
And the other balustrade, what's?
Ballisters.
Ballist, ballisters. I always called them banisters, balusters. And the whole thing's a baluster. The balusters. So those had to be fabricated, or some of them had to be fabricated?
No, they were taken out.
Okay.
And the guys put everything underneath, and then they put it back.
Put those back and-
And we need to, you know, paint them and refurbish them, you know, like-
So those are original and the railing is?
The railings, no.
The front railing is original.
Front railings.
The back railings, we ordered, special ordered through Amazon.
But that's, is that wood as it was before?
Madam Chair, just, I just want to mention that the audience cannot hear some of the comments that the contractors might be offering. They're going to get lost in the record. So if we have questions for the contractors, we'll need to-
Okay. Well, just let the record show that, if you would mind stepping up to the mic and just repeat, or, yeah, have the contractor step up and just go over quickly. I don't want to take too much of your time with this, but what's original and what had to be replaced?
So one deck is the front door. We had the original railings, and we saved them very carefully, and we reinstalled them. The rear deck, we had to special order stuff from Amazon, Victorian spindles, because the original railing was two feet high. A kid could trip and fall over it. It was dangerous, so we went up to our 36 inches.
And are they wood?
And, yeah, ornate wood. Like you said, we made railings.
And also, all the railings are wood, but it's only the trex is on the deck?
Correct. That's the composite decking. Nobody's complained about the deck, by the way. No neighbors have come by and said, oh, I hate that. Let's tear it down. Let's get rid of it. It's not visible from the street, like you said. And it's an upgrade to the house. And I couldn't leave these guys with a rotten deck. I had to come and help them. They're my friends.
Mr. Friend, did you get your question?
I think my question was whether a building permit had been granted.
If staff can answer.
Beg your pardon?
If staff can answer, no, at this point, a building permit has not been issued. This is considered as-built. So once, if you, in the event of approval, a condition of approval would be getting a building permit.
If you could help me out on my memory from the last time, but my understanding is the banisters that were original were curved all the way down from top to bottom. And now they are some square sections on the top and the bottom. Did you save one of the old banisters?
Yeah. We've got a whole bucket load at home. We have a whole tin of maybe 100, 200 original balisters, but they're the wrong height.
So it's possible with one of the old ones to get them replicated exactly by being put through a lathe?
Not, yes and no. Thing is, these things were this big, and they need to be this big. So we had to order new.
On this point, because this is kind of, and we're talking about the pickets underneath the railings, right? And this is one of my questions as well, Commissioner Smith. And I guess to Kristen, and actually to Commissioner Smith as well with regards to SOI. So new building code requires a certain height. And I think what the contractor is saying is that the old height, the original height, would not have been code. But where, how does that fit with SOI? Not talking about the design aspect of it yet. I'm going to get there in a moment. But right now, we have, what is current code, 36 inches or 48? What's current code, you know?
It's 48 inches standard.
It's 48 inches standard. And so if the originals were lower than that, they're lower than current code, how are we supposed to treat that with regards to SOI?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you know the answer or not?
I don't know the answer. I think what you have is consistent with that styling.
Okay. So then the other, the other issue I have, and so there's no surprises here for the applicant. You're right. We can't see the trex from the street. And as you said correctly, you're asking us for an exemption. So to provide an exemption, we have to figure out a logical, defensible-
Actually, I think I'm going to take exception with that word exemption. I don't think that's what we're doing here. I think it's-
Allow me to finish. Let me just finish my-
No, I don't want to promulgate misuse of that term.
All right.
We are here to look at this project and look at the ordinance of the city and apply it here in a public hearing. So we're looking at an application of the standards. We're not looking for an exemption. So I would rather say application and in light of the standards, because the standards themselves allow for different materials. So can we find a different-
Well, let me, let me just finish since I have the floor, I believe. So in a strict adherence to the SOI, we're, we need to be able to justify that this is in compliance.
I like that. Yeah, that's much better.
We have to, we still have to justify it, though, which is the point. We have to be, and so if another applicant comes to us down the road and wants to do something similar, we have to be able to say we have a circumstance or similar. So what are the circumstances? I agree that, and with my fellow commissioners and others, that you're right. We cannot see this from the road. If we could see this from the street, I would probably have a hard time authorizing the use of this material, particularly if the applicant had come to us ahead of time and said, here's what I'm proposing, and I could see it from the road, a good chance I would not allow this material. Or it would be, it would be a serious decision. Understanding that the use of trex, and I think as you described, is a composite material using wood products, which would otherwise be discarded. It adds safety, and we have fire-safe consideration. All those things are legitimate. The issue for us, well, I'll speak for myself. The issue for me is to be able to justify a decision that is, in my view, not necessarily in strict compliance with the Secretary of Interior's standards, okay? So I just want you to know where I'm at with that. And you're right. We can't see this from the street. That really gives me an out, for lack of a better term. However-
It substantiates our findings.
All right, fair enough. I feel I have an out to substantiate findings. The pickets are a little bit different, though, because you can, you can see the pickets from the street. You know, frankly, you could put up hedges all the way around your house, can't see it from the street anymore. That's a different, that's a different question. And the style is not the same as was original, okay? These are square. I believe the original, allow me just to finish. I believe the originals are curved or rounded as opposed to squares.
They have square ends on both ends, originals as well as the new ones.
I need you to step to the microphone. I appreciate your comment.
I'm sorry. I just-
That's okay.
I wasted time, too. I'd like to state the pickets we tore off are three inches square, three inches square on both ends. Then the turrets, the turn turret, the lathe part goes in the middle of those. So both the ones we put on there and the ones we took off, both have square startings, if that makes sense to you.
Okay, that actually does make sense.
I have some in my house I can bring in.
Not if you want to conclude the business tonight. And by the way, I was shocked when I read, this came to us almost a year ago. I would have sort of, I would have laid money. Oh, no, we heard this four years, four months ago.
Well, no, no, that was on, that was on us. We were educated by the staff. We were just, you guys, this is something we don't do every day. We came from neighborhood tract homes in Southern California, bought this house that we fell in love with.
Didn't even know it was-
Our responsibility is to maintain, maintain our ability to walk anywhere we want on the property and feel safe and secure.
Yeah.
It's really simple.
I want to go to the, to the Senate bill that you provided for us, Senate 920 Senate in chapter 906, which was, I can't remember the year, 1974, '76, whenever this was passed, that you offered to us.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about. 1974?
I have, I have state historical building code, hold on.
Oh, no.
August 11, 1976. Who provided that to us, Kristen? Was that from staff or was that from the applicant?
It was part of the applicant's package.
We found it in a bunch of papers.
All right. Well, that's very cool.
That's right.
You found it in a bunch of papers. All right.
The archives of the house and the history.
Yeah, with all the other kit and caboodle, with all the other stuff that went on, you know?
All right. So beyond having found it-
You know the house was built in 1895, right?
Let me just finish. Having, having, having found this in, having found this in the whole kit and caboodle, which I think is, is your phrasing, you thought it might be helpful to us to have this material without necessarily any in-depth analysis regarding. I found it very interesting, to be honest. I want to thank you again for providing it because I think it might help further discussions on other items later on down the road.
It's kind of like we discovered something, you know, like when you, those programs that you find things in your wall, you know?
Right. Last question for the contractor. I don't, it doesn't matter to me which one of you gentlemen come up. There was a substantial amount of dry rot, I believe, underneath the deck.
Yes, that's correct.
And you replaced portions. Were there other areas of rot that you may have looked? Because sometimes it can, it can seep out and cover greater areas. I presume you did a thorough inspection of the areas that might have been of concern.
Yeah, just on the areas I was working on. So the front deck and the side decks.
All right.
That's where I'm employed to take a look.
Sure.
And I flashed it with metal. We used preservative material. This thing is golden for another 200 years.
Good. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you for your comments.
I guess I wanted to clarify something. When I was talking about the railings before, I wasn't talking about the ones you see on the street. And I, these are not numbered, so I hope you can see which one I'm referring to. It's this page that shows it from the street. They're not marked.
Yeah, I took a walk around the neighborhood.
So when I was talking about the railings, that wasn't what I was referring to.
Oh, you were talking about up here.
Exactly. And this would be an illustration.
Right. See, those are the ones-
And the question was, were those original, or did those follow the original design?
They followed the original design because this was like, like up to here, where we had people out on the deck, and they would, you know, lean against it, and it was like under their fanny, you know?
You could fall over.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my husband said, well, I want something that I could at least put something on the thing if I, you know, had like a cocktail. I could lay it on there instead of trying to wobble and, you know, this and that. So anyways, it was for protection.
So that's what we're referring to, is what's on the deck?
Right. Correct.
Thank you. And I have to admit that when it came to the discussion about whether we make an exception or what we were following, I'd always understood that we follow the Interior Secretary's guidelines, but that there had been a modification by the commission, by somebody, about whether it's visible from the street. Because it's what we've applied when it came to, for example, double-pane windows. If the double-pane window is in the front, that's a problem. If it's in the back, that's a different issue.
What's stated in the ordinance?
And this sounds like a-
That's the, yes, correct.
-whole workshop so we could craft these amendments as may be needed.
I think the chair is correct. That's the, that's per ordinance.
Per ordinance.
If it can be seen from the street, then the standards apply. If it cannot be seen from the street, then applicants can pretty much do what they want. And also, you can't see, that's why we don't deal with the interiors either, because you can't see that from the street.
And one other point, you guys, is that this, this improvement that these guys performed does not take anything, anything away from the character or the integrity of the house, especially as you were just, as Mr. Smith-
I have one question about the use of the trex. Did you consider, did you get a bid for using wood rather than trex?
You know, I spent, we've lived in that house almost 20 years, or a little over 20 years. So I've spent a little time on that deck with wood. So, no. I kind of piecemealed it, per that letter I sent you guys, or to the staff.
You'd done minor repairs before? Is that what you mean?
Minors, you know?
He patched holes.
Okay, with wood.
And what are they? I mean, the planks are like, what, 16 feet or something like that? So yours truly by himself- So yours truly by himself, trying to maintain the integrity of the deck, there were times when I'd have to go out and buy wood from Home Depot and, you know, replace it and cut it and stuff like that. And as I told you before last year, that side...
Oh, could you please speak into the microphone? We are recording this and I'm sorry, I forgot to remind you to do that.
I'm sorry. Well, like I told you last year, that side of the house is brutal with the weather.
Oh.
You know, it's rain, it's sun, it's snow.
So rather than just an economic, you know, dollar cost, you felt like this was going to be more durable, based on your experience?
I did, yes. I think it's a way better improvement.
Okay.
My house is cooler.
Okay.
And it's fun to watch the dog slip on it.
Thank you.
Play on it.
Play on it.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. We're going to let you sit down. We may have some other questions as our discussion unfolds, so please try to make yourself comfortable in those chairs. I know I have a hard time with them, since we're being recorded.
I'm sure we have a public hearing technically.
Oh, I, well, we did as we started this. So I haven't closed the public hearing. But would either of the other two members in the audience like to add a comment in this public hearing on the project?
Can I add one?
Oh, sure, since there's no one else.
I remember you were curious about the Mills Act.
Oh, we, I think you missed that. We found out that, you know, the city can't do the Mills Act.
I remember, we looked into it when we first moved up there and having no history, the bureaucracy was, it was mind-boggling. And Kathy and I were still trying to work our full-time jobs and run a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, Mr. Rivas kind of went through that process and we had no idea how detailed it was.
It wasn't, you know, homeowner-friendly.
And so the city had considered that, but, you know, it's just not something that's feasible.
I just wanted to let you know because that was kind of getting my craw a little bit. I knew about the Mills Act.
I appreciate you doing a little more investigation on that.
Right.
Thank you. If you would, please give us your name, just for the record.
Julian Butler. My company is UK Construction.
Thank you.
So I had a point on the handrail. If you guys have a hang-up on the handrail, it's under 30 inches from the dirt. Technically, by UBC code, we don't need a handrail.
Mm-hmm.
But we did one anyway to match the Victorian style.
To match the style, okay.
The only thing we sort of did wrong is this composite decking, which is fantastic. It doesn't burn, it doesn't splinter, it's stronger, and it's going to last forever.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And that's in keeping with the previous style as well, right?
It looks great. I mean, the other deck was ridiculous. I wouldn't let my dog out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Just, I'd like to start the discussion by thanking you for submitting these extra documents. I think as Commissioner Friend mentioned, they're very educational and also it allowed me to do a little more investigation into this project on my own. For me, one thing that jumped out was you provided something that's labeled the National Register of Historic Places Information for Property Owners. So on the page three of that, under Tax Advantages, I did a little investigation myself. And enrolling a property into the National Historic Register, you know, there are different reasons for doing that. One is just pride of ownership and to say that, you know, and bring attention to the fact that you do have something that meets the level of those National Historic Register. Another thing is, a building that has been approved under that system is eligible for either grants or some sort of financial assistance or tax credits when you do restoration. The caveat for that is, the properties that are eligible for that have to be income-generating properties. And that's why I wanted to make sure that I understood that this is no longer an income-generating property for you. It is your private residence and you're not eligible for those things. And that's at a federal level of the National Historic Register that allows you to get those financial incentives or assistance to do a restoration. I think we call, think of a large building that needs a tremendous investment of why that's an important thing to have available to them. But in your case, it's not available. So as a private residence, you still have the pride of it being on the National Historic Register, but it's all on you to do that restoration and maintenance. And by the way, we appreciate you doing that and taking care of this gem that we have in our historic district. So that is what really brought it home for me, is that in this application of the SOI standards, when we look at our city code, that was a way for us to look and evaluate historic structures and the impact that remodeling can have on them. And I just think it's important for us to realize that a strict application of SOI standards, that would be required if you had a historic building that was undergoing some renovation that received public funds. That's where that strict application has to occur. And I don't think that that's an apt situation here. I think what we have here is a private residence. And so when we look at this, we need to understand that within the SOI standards themselves, they repeatedly tell us that there can be exceptions and that different materials can be used if there's a good reason. And I think we've heard those good reasons tonight. For you, for the deck, it was durability. For the more visible part, the ballast grade, it was, you know, you could not replicate, you couldn't replicate what was there and be at code. You had to have something taller. So those are valid reasons for us to deviate from a strict requirement and the standards prefer that things are, first off, that are restored. That's, you know, that ship has sailed. And so when we replace, they prefer to have like-for-like. Well, in this case, we have good reason for deviating from the standards. And so we've used something that honestly, to my eye, and we have heard from the experts, the contractors who did the installation, you know, this is a very similar and a very similar style to what was there originally. You did your level best to, while you couldn't replicate it, you did get something that was very similar in style. So that's my take on this application that's before us. I was one of the ones who, you know, advocated for more information a year ago, as we noted in the minutes. And upon, you know, gathering this new information, looking back at the staff report, I think that we have substantial, yeah, substantial findings to go ahead and approve this as-built. I think the applicant understands how important it is to come ahead of time to the city and I just hope that that message gets out to other property owners in our historic districts. It's so much easier to do it ahead of time than do this after the fact. So those are my thoughts and I'd like to hear what the two of you have to think about that. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I'm likely to come up with the same conclusion, the same findings, but not with the same analysis. My understanding is we've always had, for purposes of this kind of question, two standards to look at. One is like-for-like. And when you look at, and I've marked it as Exhibit A, just so you folks can know what I'm referring to, it's the one where you have this composite decking material. When you look at it, I can't tell the difference between it and wood, hence like-for-like. Secondly, we had the standard we've been following for a long time, whether it's visible from the street. In this instance, it's not. So if the sole issue was about the decking, that seems like a simple answer. But I don't know of anything in the ordinance that says anything about whether a building is on the National Registry, the State Registry, or is on the city inventory of done 30 years ago. It's that entire district. And in this instance, you have a house that's one of the most historic and representative of a particular kind of styling of that period. And so it's not too hard to understand why the standard is applied. But because of those two factors, like-for-like, it looks exactly like what you've replaced it with. It looks like wood. It has wood grain and you painted it in the same material. So that's why it doesn't seem to be a conflict or any kind of manipulation to the rules. It follows the standards we've used or as long as I've been observing either side of that dais. So that's why I don't have any problem with it. And again, you can't see it from the street. So there we go.
I just want to speak to something you said about two standards. And I think that's kind of a misstatement. The SOI standards, it's a sequence as opposed, so the preference is, it's a series. So rather than two standards or double standards, it's, you work through the process. And so the idea is to restore and maintain things. And then as they have to be replaced, the preference is like-for-like. And if that's not possible, so rather than, I don't want the public to think that we have different sets of standards. We have one set of standards, but we are allowed to work through them to see what is best, the best application to each situation in front of us. So, you know, you're right, like-for-like is a higher preference under the standards. But there certainly is, when that's not possible, then there is allowance to move on to a different material. So that's just what I want to say about that. But I'm glad to hear that you are satisfied with the styling and the project.
The conclusion, I thought the discussions that you had with your colleague with semantics and you otherwise were in agreement, I'm not sure there's an issue here. We're in agreement, I think.
I agree. And the reason I'm...
It looks exactly like what it replaces.
The reason I'm, it's not really semantics. What I feel the planning commission needs to do is set a record. You spoke to this earlier, is that, you know, as we've had these come before us, people, we haven't been clear on what our findings were. And so tonight, I just want to be very clear so that in the future, when people look at our findings and look at our decision, they know, they can anticipate how we would apply that to their situation. So I appreciate your patience and that you bear with me to, that we use the process and the language that we have in our ordinance and the Secretary of Interior standards and so on. Mr. Friend?
Thank you. I was glad to hear the chairman use the word "exception" in her discussion of how we're going to get to an approval of this. And also the use of the term deviation. I think we're looking for compliance with the SOI. I meant to ask staff a question, and Commissioner Smith, you might know this. This is the Combellic House. This is, like you said, Madam Chair, this is one of the gems in our historic district. It's in our historic inventory, is it not?
Yes.
So I bring that point up only to say that we, I feel compelled to be very, very careful in how we approach this. And I do think that how the motion is going to be constructed and the findings that may be used will be a determinant as to which way I vote on the project. Right now, because the decking cannot be seen from the street, and really, the vast majority of this cannot be seen from the street, that I, in terms of the work, that gives me, it allows me to feel a little bit more comfortable with this. But the standard, I think, has to be really high. I know that the contractor is, doesn't necessarily understand, and this is not a criticism, but our concern over materiel. But when we're talking about structures of this type, the standard, the highest standard in the SOI that we're supposed to try to achieve is like-for-like. We don't allow vinyl windows. What's the big argument about vinyl windows? You can't really tell from the street that it's not an original. You have to get up close to look at it. That doesn't make it acceptable. I think we have to be very careful about using the logic that, well, it really kind of looks like it. That's not the standard we've used and that's not the standard we should be applying. And I don't think that's the standard that we should be applying for a structure such as this. My concern, and I think that the chair, you reiterated it, it was one of my arguments, that we have to, whatever decision process we use for this has to be defensible and we have to be able to apply it to future projects. And so while, I mean, I can support the conclusion, I am less comfortable with the logic of the analysis that's been offered so far. I think we are looking for relaxing of compliance with the SOI for this structure. And to me, the only thing I'm really comfortable with is you can't see any of it from the street, which has, in the ordinance, that's one of the requirements of the city. So if you don't have that as a concern, you can relax the standards a bit. And so we are talking about a relaxation of standard. But I want to make sure that we're very, very cautious about how we do this and how the motion is crafted and the findings that we're going to use to get there. I'm sorry, if this deck were clearly visible, I would think you would have to go with wood. I would think you'd have a hard time saying you could use a modern material. And I like Trex, don't get me wrong, okay? It's a great material. But for these types of structures in this type of district, using these kinds of standards, guess what? We have to use wood because that's what was available, wood windows, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of where I'm at. I hope I'm making sense.
I want to be clear, and Ms. Hunter, help us with this. Tonight, before, we have one project and that is the visible railings and the deck. It's all one project, right?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't approve the installation of the railings a year ago.
And nothing was approved at the last meeting. It was continued.
It was continued. So it is all one project. It is a deck with new railings. So we don't have two, we don't have two things to vote on. We have one project that encompasses both of those.
No, correct. I understand that. And the work's already been done. It's as-is. So again, whatever logic we're going to apply for the entirety, okay, has got to be defensible.
Right.
And particularly with the highest standard for this particular building. So that's kind of...
Are you prepared to make a motion?
No, I actually am not. I'm waiting to see where the two of you, what you move to decide is which way I'm going to vote.
Mr. Smith, do you have any other...
I guess I've already expressed my views about the decking. And I admit that I don't remember whether this was on the National Historic Registry. Is that right?
This building, yes.
And that includes, covers additional standards that are separate from what we are responsible for. And I'll just tell you...
I, you know, we can only be responsible for our standards.
Yours, right, exactly. But I just mentioned what I learned from Lexi Boger, who is in that, Elmo Vasadi's property years ago, and that tasting room is back to the 1800s. When they needed to make some repairs on the stone carving, they actually brought in a stone mason from Italy, brought him in to do it, to make sure it was exact. It's suggestive of how exacting those standards are for, you know, but again, that's not what we're responsible for. And I've expressed my view... And I've expressed my views about the decking.
Okay. Well, we have before us the staff report with the recommended Planning Commission action. And tonight, we were provided another copy of the recommended conditions of approval. So I'd like to direct our attention to those. And at this time, I will make a motion that we take the recommended action from that staff report originally dated August 15, 2023, adopting the staff report as part of the public record and making the findings listed, of which there are six, and then conditionally approve SPR 99-5R located at 3059 Cedar Ravine Road, based on the project information. Findings included the staff report and subsequent material provided for this meeting tonight, July 3. And the recommended conditions of approval are listed in the memo we received. This is just the same ones that were given to us a year ago. Approve SPR 9905R to remove the rotted stairs, decking, railing, balusters as needed. Replace stairs, railing, and balusters with similar materials and style. Replace the wood decking with composite decking at the existing primary dwelling located 3059 Cedar Ravine Road, APN 0041126. This approval is based on the analysis provided in the staff's August 15, 2023 report to the Planning Commission and limited to the compliance with the project description in the applicant submittal package listed. Now, there are a total of four elements to that package. And then it goes on with nine more conditions of approval. Also carries over from SPR 99-5, the original conditions of approval from the previous site plan review in 1999. So I am going over this, rather than reading point by point. That is my motion. And I've... Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we have a motion and a second. And so let's open this up for further discussion, possible amendments to the motion.
So two elements I'm going to... Would request that the chair consider, and that is, in our findings, visibility from the street, which I think is a huge issue, because that's specific in the ordinance and the fact that the changes are, in fact, not visible from the street. So I think that is something that needs to be worked into the motion. The other issue, though, that I have... I have some concern with, and this goes back to the staff report from August of 2023, and on page... Jeez, the page isn't even numbered. Page eight, I'm sorry, it is numbered. On page eight.
Of the staff report?
Of the staff report from August of 2023. So on page eight, it says item six. This is a standard we have. Deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced. Whether severity of deterioration requires replacement, the new feature will match the old design, color, texture, or possible materiel. And in the staff's opinion of this... Pardon me, Kristin, is I going to disagree with staff? It's the opinion of staff that the proposed project would replace deteriorated features with materials that have historical characteristics. The Trex deck does not meet that. Okay. I think that's just factual. So our findings have to address this. And I think we could use, I'm just going to offer this, the fire safety as an overriding consideration. Again, going back to the, we need to have defensible rationale. And I think the defensible rationale in this case might be, and again, it's only because I can't see it from the street, otherwise I might not be willing to do this, but I can't see it from the street. I'm trying to be consistent. The fire safety, the Trex provides us with much greater fire safety than wood would... Wood would. Than would be available through the use of wood, okay? If we can say it that way. And so, again, I just think these are important elements to include in our findings, particularly for the...
I understand what you're saying for purposes of an amendment to modify what we have before us. So the idea is it's not visible from the street, and that it is substantially like what's... It's replacing. It looks like wood. And then you're adding an extra component, which is it's a public policy consideration that we have the fire resistance issue. And that's an added measure.
Yeah. I would actually say, because I can't see it from the street, it doesn't have to look like wood or not. I can't see it, right? So I would prefer not to use that connection. But the fire safety, public policy for fire safety, I think, becomes a legitimate consideration as to why we would not require... Replacement of missing features will be substantiated... Oh, I'm sorry. The new feature will match old and design, color, texture, or possible materiel. We are deviating from this standard. Why are we deviating from the standard? And I'm going to say two things. You can't see it from the street, and it provides a higher level of fire safety. So there's my logic. I can fall back on that. I think, to me, that's defensive.
I agree with that. And also, I would like to add to that statement about the deck, which I think we can make a statement about the deck and a statement about the balustrades.
It's the same thing, too, for the safety, you know, the higher...
Also, I think it's important to address the fact that it's more durable for future This is... Gets, again, to affordability and keeping our housing stock livable, and it's something that we need to address and respect. This is something that people need to be able to do to their homes in the historic district, is to make a long-lasting change, so that... And I think that's something you can get with the Trex, in addition to the enhanced fire safety. I think that we can add a brief statement under number three... See, on page 10, 2, 3, where we talk about the project request, we can talk about the deck. I had a concern, kind of based on what we talked about with the balustrades. They're not exactly what was there before. Of course, we don't, you know, we know what they replaced. But I would like to add there that the changes in the design of the balustrades are minor and are compatible with the original design. Again, you know, we've kind of gone over this. We're trying to find a way to use the SOI standards in this instance. To me, that's important for why we are approving, you know, a design change, as opposed to making them... Rip them out and go give something that was exactly what was there.
I think the term would be substantially similar, so that in design and appearance, right?
Uh huh. So to amend under number three, we'll add regarding the deck, which is not visible from the street.
That's important. That's important, please.
This is under our findings. The composite material provides... The composite material used provides enhanced fire safety and durability for future maintenance. And then a second sentence, changes in the design of the balustrades are minor and are compatible with the original design.
I guess I feel more comfortable if we stuck just to what Commissioner Friend said about the idea it's not visible from the street.
But the balustrades are.
And in the case of the balusters, they follow the same design. The difference was a matter of inches, literally.
Well, I guess my concern is...
And affordability, and affordability, we start to go down some brand-new roads.
Okay. In the front from Cedar Ravine, those are original. On the side, this is visible from Thompson Way. So our ordinance talks about visibility from the street. So in the future, I, you know, want people to recognize that we considered the visibility from Thompson Way. And so, in my opinion, the design chosen, and based in part in what the contractor shared with us tonight, you know, in his expert opinion, that this is a very similar design, especially with the square element top and bottom and the design in between. You know, they did their level best to be similar, but within, you know, today's building codes. Much safer, something much taller than what was there.
I think the difference of inches was described, as I understood it, a matter of safety. The previous railing was so low, it was easy to fall over it for an adult, not just a child, but so there was that safety component. But the styling is still consistent with what it was before. I guess I'm looking for the things that gets us to where we were headed without opening up some doors for future discussion, for future buildings, where someone's going to say, well, this is more durable, and it's more portable, and so on.
I think the architecture is substantially similar, and it also meets current building code regulations for safety.
Yes.
And I think you can always kind of fall back on that.
That would be clear.
Although you have to admit, the lower railings meant for very fun cocktail parties with people falling over all the time.
I second your motion.
So amend changes in design of the balustrades are minor and architecturally similar with the original design and meet current safety standards.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I accept that amendment, and I need a second for the amended...
Second amendment.
So we have... It's never straightforward, is it? So we have a motion and a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Any... Anything?
Appreciate discussion. That's good.
Okay. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the roll?
And staff, clarify, you had a sentence before the changes in design of the balustrades. Is that no longer...
I... That is to be included in under number three?
Yes.
Okay. So both...
Both sentences?
Deck discussion, and then a separate sentence regarding the balustrade.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, please call the roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right. Well, that was, I'm sure, way more difficult or convoluted than you thought it would be, but congratulations, 3-0. The decision is appealable for 10 days. Ms. Hunter can give you, you know, any information you need about that and can keep you apprised should there be an appeal. But again, thank you very much for your work on that house, and good luck with your maintenance and keeping it looking... Keep it looking beautiful.
The fact that it can be appealed is another...
Can we learn our lesson? Get a permit?
I'll be talking to my manager.
Yes. Work with staff to get all the permits that you need.
Just a note, the fact that it can be appealed is another reason to be so careful about laying out the findings.
Well, exactly.
Because it's also for council, as well as for our future decisions.
Right.
Because if somebody should appeal the decision, then council will have something to fall back on.
And this, as we said before, this is a really special case. Some of the things that come before us, we, you know, we wonder why a certain structure was even included in our historic district, but it is. And so we're just trying to make strong findings that people... Even a future planning commission can go back and look at and say, okay, that's what they meant. That's what they were thinking. So thank you very much.
Hey, we really thank you for all your patience, too. I mean, like I said, this has all been new to us, and we've had a, you know, a great person here is our gal.
Our guide.
Our guide.
Talking to Stan.
So I guess we're going to... We'll be working with Kristin. How's that?
Okay. You're in good hands.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
The Combellics used to live there? They owned it originally?
Yeah.
Definitely. I lived there all my life, but it's funny now. Very went out of business, their house is still there.
All right. Well, hey, you guys. Stay cool.
You, too. Okay.
Thank you all very much. For your time.
All right. I'm going to take a minute here to get reorganized.
Do you ever have workshops on this subject? Come back.
Okay. Moving on to our agenda. Next item is 10.2, Zone Change 24-4 Supportive Housing Text Amendments. Consideration of a request from the City of Placerville to amend Title 10 zoning of the Placerville City Code to address... Excuse me. Require 2021 to 2029 housing element implementation programs, B2 and B8. I will turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, if you are ready to proceed.
Thank you. So on December 13, 2022, the City Council adopted the amended six-cycle housing element, including goals and implementation programs to address and facilitate the development of housing to meet the city's regional housing needs. Of these housing element goals and implementation programs, the city is currently seeking to address Goal B, to facilitate the development of housing for special needs households, and implementation programs B2 and B8, to amend Title 10 of the City Municipal Code to bring the city regulations into compliance with state law regarding supportive housing. Supportive housing is a type of residential service facility, a subcategory of the term community care facility under the city code. Supportive housing provides for permanent housing and supportive services, such as medical and mental health care, substance abuse treatment, employment services, and advocacy for benefits to assist homeless residents into independent living. The city currently permits residential service facilities and residential care facilities of six or fewer residents within single-family residential, multifamily residential, and mixed-use zones, so long as the proposed facility is not within 1,000 feet of another facility. Further, the city also permits residential service or care facilities for seven or more residents in any zone under a conditional use permit. Assembly Bill 2162, effective January 1, 2019, requires that supportive housing be consistent... Oh, sorry. Be used allowed by right where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted. To become consistent with state regulations, residential service facilities and residential care facilities are to be treated as a residential use of the property within multifamily zones and mixed-use zones. These uses would be subject to only those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type in the same zone. As shown in Attachment 1 and in the memo provided to Planning Commission prior to the meeting, copies of which are available at the back table, amendments are proposed to the following zoning ordinance sections. 10-3-4, uses permitted in any zone. 10-5-9, low-density multifamily residential. 10-5-10, medium-density multifamily residential. 10-5-11, high-density multifamily residential. 10-5-12, very-high-density multifamily residential. 10-5-13, business professional five... I'm sorry. 10-5-14, central business district. 10-5-15, commercial. 10-5-16, convenience commercial. And 10-5-17, highway commercial. The outlined text amendments to Title 10 are exempt from the environmental review pursuant... And from environmental... I apologize. I'm tongue-tied tonight, guys. From environmental review pursuant to the California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Chapter 3, Sections 15060C2 and 3, in that the project is not a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and... Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and has no potential for resulting in a physical change to the environment. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, one, adopt the staff report and memorandum as part of the public record, and, two, recommend that city council find the text amendments exempt from environmental review as previously described, and approve Zone Change 24-04 to amend Title 10 of the city's municipal code as provided in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report, and I'll do my best to answer your questions.
And, thank you very much. I realize that there's, this is a bit of housekeeping. You had to do a lot of analysis to, to find where our code was not in conformity, but regarding the memo that we received tonight, that we would just be able to incorporate that into, I guess, under the action, the text amendments as described here and in that memo, right?
Yes.
You just refer to it by reference? Okay. Incorporate by reference?
And I guess to clarify for anyone watching, the memorandum includes changes adding residential care facilities as a permitted by right use within the mixed-use zones.
Right. And then, so I understand what the draft ordinance would look like, what is listed on page 2 as Sections 7, 8, and 9, those would continue, those would just get pushed back and become 11, 12, 13, 14?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not removing that?
We are not.
We just would change the numbering?
These would slip in, so Section 7 would go underneath the current Section 6, everything else would be pushed down.
Okay, so all the, all right, I understand how, what's described in the memo fits in with the draft ordinance that was provided, provided as Attachment 1. Okay. I, when reading this, you know, this is just something we have to do, it's important for the state, it's important for the city of Placerville. I just wanted to get a little information, and I don't know if you have this at hand, maximum occupancy under consideration. This is, amendments include stating that, there's, let me find it here, facilities for six or fewer, and then residential service facilities for seven or more residents. How large can these facilities get, or how large does the city think they might be? I, I realize in a bigger jurisdiction, you know, that they could be quite large, but, and I apologize, I didn't review the housing element, it probably is in there, but I don't know what our need is and what the city's anticipating.
I, I do not know that I can answer that.
Okay.
I am aware, I believe, of 12 beds.
12.
But, again, I would have to.
And are these, is this new construction, or is this conversion of existing structures?
I believe it could be either.
I'm sorry, you believe it?
It could be either.
Either. Okay, so.
That was my read on it. It's not new construction, it's any, anything.
But this allows by right use of that property for new construction or for converting an existing?
Correct, in, in those multifamily and mixed-use zones.
And of course, anything that's new construction would have to go through the Environmental Quality Act review, breaking ground, if there were any impacts, those would have to be mitigated. This, this action itself is not subject to sequo, but new construction would be. Possibly, yeah.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, it would be, depending, yeah, they, you'd have to go through an initial study, anyway. Yeah. Okay. To answer my own question, do either of you have questions about the?
I guess my questions are just trying to see how this would be applied. For example, when it talks about the central business district, you're talking about, for example, Main Street. So, would we have multifamily dwellings going on Main Street?
We, we do already have apartments above quite a few of the businesses on Main Street. So this would allow an RFS, or, oh, sorry, residential service facility, or residential care facility within those by right.
So is this going to limit the size of those multifamily housing apartment complexes coming in on Main Street? What?
It.
How would it be different? If we have multifamily housing on Main Street in the downtown area, how would this change?
It allows the establishment of the residential care facility or the residential service facility by right. It, it removes the distance requirement, so the 1,000-foot distance requirement from other facilities of the same nature, and it also, yeah, it allows it by right.
So by right, it means that?
It doesn't require a conditional use.
The Planning Commission, for example, would have no more control over those kind of matters?
It, yes, it takes away the, the city's ability to govern those. They're by right, so there's no discretionary review.
And we would be doing this because the state is saying we have to do it?
Yes, this is, this is a state law.
We're being, we're being compelled. Sacramento is, this is not the first time Sacramento has compelled, well, not only Placerville, they're not picking on us, per se, but local jurisdictions are being compelled.
State law typically supersedes local jurisdictions that don't have updated ordinances. This is just making us consistent with state law.
If I may, so on, on page 2, in the first paragraph, this might just be semantics in your first bullet point there, about four sentences down, where it reads, supportive services such as medical and mental health care, substance abuse treatment, employment services, and advocacy for benefits to assist homeless residents. So these RCFs and RSFs are not just for homeless residents. The home, advocacy, advocacy for benefits to homeless, whatever that means, that, it's gibberish to me, frankly, it doesn't make any sense. It's just one other example of what these facilities are, are supporting at the end of the day, right?
Correct. Yeah, I would refer to, on page 3, we have definitions, at least what's in our city code, and so you could look at residential care facility or residential service.
That, that I see. I was actually trying to understand what, if I read this, supportive housing provides for permanent housing and supportive services, advocacy, it's advocacy for benefits doesn't sound right, it just, it just sounds weird. But I'm sure it's probably state language, not holding you accountable. At the end of the day, Kristen, this is staff's, this is how staff believes we can best comply with what Sacramento was dictating to us. Is that, is that really just the, the quick of it?
Yes, we're trying to be consistent with the law.
And, and, you know, so for me, I, I won't speak for my fellow commissioners, but, you know, I feel my hands are, are really tied. This is pretty much, yeah, rubber stamp, because we don't really have, have much choice in the matter. And, and so, obviously, I'm frustrated by that, not necessarily by this, per se, but just by the whole, that, that's how things are being done these days. So, anyway, I, I have no basis to argue against what's proposed, and I'll support whatever motion comes across.
Well, I just want to point out to you, and put, get this on the record, in the legislative information provided, it states that local government may disapprove a housing development as described, this is described in paragraph 1 of this document, by making written findings. So if the city finds that a proposed development is going to have adverse impact on public health and safety, and there's no way to satisfactorily mitigate those impacts, I mean, you know, yes, this, we are being compelled to do this, but I don't, this is addressing a statewide need, and actually, a, a need in our own community to, to streamline it, just to make, bring these things online a little quicker, a little easier, should you find, and you have to have a developer to, to build them, if this is not something the city itself is building, this is just an approval process. And there is a, a method whereby, if someone would happen to pick an inappropriate spot, and there were objections, there are ways for the city to say, not in this location, this particular law does not apply, and, and we object, and we're not going to allow you to build it because we feel it's inappropriate. So, you know, I, I understand that you feel like we're being forced in this, and, and to some degree we are, but it's not as if we're suddenly going to have a lot of, of these developments up and down Main Street.
So, we are being, we, it is being dictated to us.
Absolutely.
And, and.
And we're just putting our code into conformity.
Let me just finish. We're, these aren't new developments, and because these don't have to go through any review, I'm not even sure there's a permitting, they're, these are by right, these are going to be allowed by right.
There will be for, I'm trying to find it, for residential.
For the RSF, for the, for the larger ones?
The larger ones.
Yeah, seven or more.
It'll be a ministerial permitting process, it will no longer be discretionary.
Yeah, okay, but so, but for the, but for the care facilities, I'm not opposed to care facilities, my father's in the care facility, I'm not, not, not opposed to them, but right now, our, our, our ordinance says, we only allow so many in a certain area, you know, every 1,000 feet, you can have one. Remember the discussion on the short-term rentals? And, and members of the audience made the argument that, you know, a neighborhood and a sense of community neighborhood and having neighbors is, it deteriorates when you have, you know, these short-term rentals in there, because now you don't have neighbors. This is, this is similar. So it, it, it's not, it's not completely innocuous. I understand, there is a need, okay? But the state, I think, is using, you know, a hammer to remove the fly off your forehead, and is just saying, it's just going to be this way, period, and local jurisdictions are going to have to deal with it, irregardless of what potential impact it might have on neighborhoods. Because now, you could have eight homes in a row that all of a sudden are all RCFs, right? And so if you're a homeowner, and all of a sudden your neighborhood has been, is, is really completely changed by the fact that, oh, I really don't have any neighbors anymore, these are all treatment facilities, medical or mental health or whatever, and it's different than a neighborhood.
I, I absolutely disagree with that characterization. In the process, now, what this does is just streamline it, it's not going to become, come before the Planning Commission for approval, but, again, the, the city, staff is going to have to develop your, your in-house guidelines for the ministerial approval of these.
Not for the RCFs, maybe, maybe the larger ones, but not for the, the six or less. Six or less, somebody could just do it, boom, done.
I will say that we are not amending the single-family residential codes, it, it will remain multifamily and mixed use, so I'm not sure if that helps with neighborhoods.
It does, but then, you know, one could argue that that's burdening those folks that for whatever reason can't afford the luxury of a single family.
And I think, you know, what you're painting is a very extreme situation, and I really don't see that coming.
Law of unintended consequences.
To fruition. Again, the law as written allows the city to put in writing why they wouldn't allow nothing but the care facilities in a row, because that would have an adverse impact. That, in itself, is a bit more work for city staff, but when you think about the projects being streamlined and approved, and getting online to help relieve the homeless situation, that is a benefit, benefit for the good, benefit for our community, and, you know, I, we will have to keep our eyes open, if an adverse impact does arise, we need to remember that we do have a method to address that within the law.
I think, Madam Chair, with all due respect, I think what you're missing is that this is now allowed by right, particularly for these six or less. I want to be clear on this, these are allowed by right, there's no, there is no permitting process, there's no ministerial anything until you get to the seven or more. So you could have as many of the, I think it's RCF, if I have the acronyms correctly, you could have a, a whole plethora of them, and the city is never going to know. That, that's, that's my point, it's allowed by right. We can't say no.
Is that, I, that's not the way I'm reading the law.
The law's only talking about new development. If there's no permitting process, the city would never, ever know it's happening. I'm allowed by right to have this, you can't tell me no. It's allowed by right. And all I'm saying is, and sure, am I, am I painting, am I painting a potentially extreme? Yes, but it's always the, the law of unintended consequences. And, and so, I just want to point out that these things are not as innocuous and completely as beneficial and unicorny as, as, you know, we may think they are. So I'm very cynical that way.
There is a ministerial permit involved.
There will be a process for the residential care facilities, seven beds or greater, I, I would have to double-check on what we currently do for residential service facilities, I apologize, I.
RSF is the seven or more, RCF, residential care, I believe, yeah, RCF is six or less, residential care is, is six or less, residential service is seven or more. And my understanding is that for the residential care.
I think that's, that's.
Do I have it wrong?
Well, so for, I guess to clarify.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I have it, I do have it wrong.
That's okay.
RCF is seven or more.
To clarify, though, Pierre and I did a, a review of our codes versus, you know, what's proposed, and we consider the community care facilities really to fall under the umbrella of supportive housing.
No, 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 residential care, RCF, no, RCF, six or fewer. And, oh, you know what, look at page 2 of your staff report, second bullet here at the bottom. A, city will amend the zoning ordinance, residential care facilities, RCF is italicized, serving six or fewer.
Mm-hmm.
But then the next one, in B, it says allowing for RCF for seven or more, but I thought that's the service.
No, it's a, it's a residential care facility, which is defined on page 3, and so those are certain activities that take place in a residential care facility versus a residential service facility, you know, it's a level.
Okay, all right, so, but the licensing, okay, yes, an RCF can be, okay, so the capacity, the capacity is, I'll see, without knowing.
So it does say of, for seven or more persons, there would be a ministerial permit process, and it doesn't say that there is a ministerial permit process.
For the six or less, there's not.
Okay. But that's at the level for RCF, the residential care facility. And a residential service facility is where the operator receives compensation for the provision of personal services in addition to housing. So if that operator's receiving compensation, there, you know, there must be, there would be required to be some oversight, whoever's compensating them, to make sure that they are adhering to their standards. And also, the RCF is also licensed by the state of California, so, again, there are standards that apply to an RCF, as well as to an R.
Let me tell you, having just moved my father from one home to another, both facilities being licensed by the state, that, it doesn't necessarily mean what you would hope that it would mean.
I understand that.
So, there's a wide variation in the levels of care.
Yeah.
Even, there's a, so.
Yeah, I've had some experience with that myself.
Right, okay, so.
You have my sympathies on that, so, and I understand. But, anyway, be that as it may, I would entertain a motion to take action on this item?
I'll move.
I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Well, no, that, that's all right, I'm just, just listening to the discussion you've had, I really get the idea that we don't have any choice.
We don't.
That's true. We are trying to get our ordinance.
So, and I, and I do agree with Commissioner Friend's concerns, there are all kinds of potential problems down the road, so.
Well, I just hope that, you know, we don't encounter those problems, if we do, the city will have to remember that we do have some recourse, but hopefully we won't get to.
I'm sorry, what's the recourse?
It's, let me see, it's in the bill itself, and we were provided that. It's, let me see, it's in the bill itself, and we were provided that, and on Page 7, it talks about how a local government may disapprove a housing development described in Paragraph 1. And that Paragraph 1 is the, is this law, that we're, that's what we're trying to bring our ordinance into compliance with. So...
I'm going to move that we recommend the language text changes as well as the proposed ordinance, including the subsequent document that was handed out this evening to the city council for their approval and adoption.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything else, any other topics, or any other discussion on this? Ms. Hunter, please call the rule.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Is this appealable? This is, as all things, is appealable to city council for 10 days. All right.
Which is, kind of doesn't make sense, since it's going to city council, and so, I mean, since it's going to council for their adoption, you would appeal, what are you going to appeal, the fact that we're sending it to council? No, you can't send it to council.
Appeal the fact that we approved it.
Oh, my, my.
I'm checking to see if we had the minutes from the la, I couldn't remember if we did that in the last meeting.
Okay.
Never mind.
All right. We will give the public, well, yeah, the public will have a chance to speak to this when it comes before the city council, even if it is not appealable in, by right. Moving on, number 11, we have no continued items. New business? There is none, Ms. Hunter, okay. Next is matters from commissioners and staff. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, 13.1, any updates for us?
Yes, unfortunately, we were not able to get any projects for July 16th, so we will not have a meeting until August 20th.
And August 6th is canceled because of national night out?
August 6th is canceled due to national night out.
Okay, so our next meeting will be August 20th. Moving on to 13.2, planning commission matters. Are there any items that either one of you would like to bring up at this time?
Only that I note that you ran a really tight meeting, guys got out at 7:03 last time, that was pretty good.
Ryan, Ryan, Mr. Carter!
The last two, actually, so I think Mr. Carter had 45 minutes of the meeting before that.
It was, well, a tight ship, for sure. Anything from you, Mr. Smith?
I think we're going to be reporting to you when we have a full body, I think that's what we discussed last time. We only had three persons here, and the preference was that we have all five.
Oh, is this on 1321, special committee?
I assume that's what she's referring to.
That, I hadn't moved on to the special committee, I was wondering if you had anything else you wanted to bring up at this time?
No.
Well, moving on to the special committee report, it was my understanding that Commissioner Lepper was going to work through staff to submit some comments for consideration. I don't know if that, she's had time to do that, but rather than potentially violating the Brown Act, we thought it would be a good way to quickly address the, any changes that need to be made to the original memo and taking her input, so has there been any, any...
Commissioner Carter and I didn't really understand the concept, so that's why we asked her to spell it out. She's talking about having an inventory that would be done by going out to take photographs of properties, and that's the way it was described, as I recall it, and the idea would be for us to learn the details.
The work before the special committee right now, just to review, is to edit the original memo and then bring that forward to the entire body for consideration.
Right, and then on that, as I indicated, and I sent it to Kristen today, I have sent revisions to that, the original memo, to Kristen to provide to Commissioners Carter and Smith, and then it sounds like maybe Commissioner Lepper is also going to submit comments.
Right.
And the way I would envision this kind of working out is, that memo comes back, be the second draft, for lack of a better term, and then we would discuss, then I think we'll have something that we can really work from, and then do whatever fine tuning or adjustments to that memo is possible. And that takes care of the memo itself, which is, in my view, is kind of a summation of the work that the committee did last year. And then, I think what would be before us is, all right, well, here's a whole list of things that could be done, and we can't do all, if even any of them, right, all at once. Can we prioritize, collectively, I think we should prioritize, and this year, you know, we do this one, or we do these two. That's kind of what I'm thinking will happen.
Yeah, I think, I agree with your assessment, and also, to add to that, in the final memo, once we establish our priorities, things that the planning commission can do versus what is required by city council, we would put a top priority on what work we could do, include other information that the city council needs to know that's in that memo, but then forward that, officially forward that on to city council.
And also include to city council, here's what the commission needs. There's resources, I think, that we need, you know, we need training on this.
And again, I think it's important to say what our priorities are, because, yeah, training, more information, where do we want to start? So that's, that's what I think the full body needs to consider, but we have to have that final version of the memo before us, so that we can work from that.
Yep.
Okay, great, well, I look forward to seeing that, maybe as soon as August 20th, that would be, that would really be good.
Yeah, with no meetings, we don't have the, the next two regular meetings aren't happening, that might give commissioners...
What was the date where we were coming back?
August 20, August 20. So that's, that's, it's a little bit more than a month, yeah, month and a half. God, it's already July.
All right.
I cannot believe that project came to us last August. When I saw that, I went, "No, that can't be right, they were here like four months ago." Oh, my gosh, how...
And I'm sorry, you know, it was incumbent on them to come, they knew what we needed, and...
All right.
And I, yeah, I've driven by that place, and they need to finish up that project, and probably do get going on other things, too, so who knows? But it was a harsh lesson for them to learn, I think, that, and I can't believe that they've owned the property that long and just didn't realize what they, because they, yeah, they didn't just buy the property, they've had...
They rented it as a bed and breakfast, they rented it as the Kembellic House. There was some information that came out the last time they were here, they, they knew better, okay? I'm on record as saying, I think the, we were all of the opinion, they knew better, or certainly should have.
They should have, but...
Well, one of the things that we did discuss at various times was a way to make sure that those people in historic districts know about that. We talked with the recorder of deeds for the county about a way to give notice to those properties and to do it without us paying for it. There's a number of ways to try to do it, but that's one of the things to look at, is to make sure that we do that. And then the other thing that's concerning is to make sure that the, that the material is simple, easy to follow.
Right.
Okay, great, well, it is 7:42, and we stand adjourned until August 20th. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.